The Majority Leader for motion to adopt today's agenda.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move to adopt the agenda 2009, fourth special session dated June 12, 2009.
On the motion without any objections, order. Can I ask Senator Tina Munya Barnes to lead us in the prayer? Senator Frank Blas, if you can lead us in the inter-fresi. And Senator Talia, if you can lead us in both the singing of the National Anthem and the Guam Hymn. Okay, so please rise.
In the name of Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Fathers, we gather here for a special session. We ask that you bestow your blessings on each and every one of us as policymakers so that we can continue to do your will. In your name we pray. Amen.
Inter-fresi, Senator Blas.
By the nautical light, what so proudly we hailed! At the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight! O'er the ramparts we watched, what so gallantly streaming! And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air! Gay through, through the night, that our flag was still there! Oh, say us that stars sang, o'er the land of the great way! For the land of the free and the home of the brave!
I ask that the clerks can please take roll.
Senator Ida. Senator Uggun. Senator Blas. Senator Calvo. Senator Cruz. Senator Espaldón. Senator Guthertz. Senator Munya Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rector. Senator Rispishu. Senator Taitugui. Senator Tenorio. Speaker Wampet.
Present.
Madam Speaker, I wish to report there is a quorum.
Thank you. I recognize the Majority Leader for other motions.
Madam Speaker, I just moved that Senators Calvo and Espaldón be excused from session. The other two senators, they're still on island, so I... I'm sorry, and Senator Uggun as well. And so it's recto, so I guess four senators, Madam Speaker, Senator Uggun, Senator Rector, Senator Calvo, and Senator Espaldón be excused from today's session.
Okay, and that motion without any objections, so ordered. Senator Rispishu, and the other motions and communications and messages.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we approve the legislative journal dated 6/0909, special session, subject to corrections.
On the motion without objections, so ordered.
There are no communications and petitions, so I move that messages from Imagalahin, Guam be appended to today's session journal.
On the motion without objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. There are no reports of standing committees, and there are no reports of select committees. And in the introduction and first reading of bills, I move that Bill Number 1 (4-S) be given its first reading.
On that motion without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, under motions, I move that any resolution introduced for the remainder of this fourth special session be automatically adopted, and that the legal counsel be given resolutions and condolences or certificates of condolence in nature. We, yeah, it's a special session, so we can all...
You're right, so it's just one session and agenda.
Yeah, I apologize. Madam Speaker, under legislative concurrence, there are none, and in the consent calendar, there are none.
So we have Bill 1, (4-S), and there would need to be a motion to 1-4-S.
Thank you.
For the committee of the whole?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. First, I move that we resolve in the committee of the whole for the purpose...
It is.
As a point of information, Bill 1 is on second reading because we adopt... I move that Bill Number 1 be accepted, or, what, Bill Number 1 (4-S). An act to authorize tax credits, tax offsets, and tax rebates to obtain a temporary campus for use as interim John F. Kennedy High School campus, and to address the facility needs of the Guam Public School System. This was introduced by the Committee on Rules at the request of the Governor. Madam Speaker, I move that this be placed in the second reading file.
On the motion without objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move then to resolve into the committee of the whole, and to have the Chairman of the Appropriations Committee chair the committee of the whole. And I move subsequent to that to have a brief recess so that you can instruct the Sergeant at Arms to set up the place.
On the motion without any objections, so ordered. Okay, we're going to be in a brief recess so we can set up the place, bring in the officials to be sworn in before we restart session. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're back into the committee as a whole convening on the matter of the submission of the Governor, and it's called to a special session on Bill Number 1-4-S, which would allow for tax abatements and rebatements for the payment, to be used in the payment of a lease for the TGEN facility to be used as temporary educational facilities for the government of Guam and the Guam Public School System. We have before us representatives from the administration and the Guam Public School System. We're also waiting for representatives from the Department of Revenue and Taxation. Bill Number 1-4-S, we will go ahead and have the Governor's office and representatives explain the intent of the bill and the provisions of the bill that they wish to have implemented and are calling for action on the legislatures' part. So I would, at this time, ask the spokesperson who is going to represent the Governor of Guam, who is off-island, to make the presentation on the bill. So may I have the Governor's representative?
Good afternoon, members of the legislature. As you may well know, we've been in negotiations with contract, a contract with GORTAC for the use of their facility for interim campus of GPSS. Unfortunately, also, our administration doesn't have the cash available for the future years allocated to make the lease payment. So as part of that, it was known early on as the speaker had submitted legislations authorizing it, which hasn't been heard as of yet, but that allowed for the, or, it wasn't passed as of yet, but was, but that bill was, but that bill... passed as of yet, but was, but that bill was, but that bill was anticipating the use of tax credits for the use of the interim facility. We have found that, we have found a contractor that's willing to provide the interim facility, however, is conditioned upon the contract that we've, that we have with, or that we are finalizing with that contractor. They're requiring that legislation be passed by, I believe it's the seventeenth of this month, that allows them to take tax credits or rebates or what have you. I understand that there's some discussion in the terminology that's using, being used by tax credits, rebates, or abatement. There is some issue with the income tax, whether you could get a tax credit, what normally is done with Getca, because Getca does offer QC programs that gives abaintments to income taxes. So there is probably one definition that needs to be changed in there that tax credits would be, or would be deemed an abatement of taxes for income tax purposes as used on Guam. But this was something that we had to, we had to rush through the system. We got our draft legislation from, or under the agreement, let me start off, under the agreement, the landlord requested that they have legislation passed to their liking. That was the language that they needed in there. They weren't willing to enter into an agreement with the government of Guam unless they got the language that they needed. So as soon as we got the language that they requested, we forwarded it to the legislature for deliberation. We don't have very much time if this is going to become a reality. Their school's going to be starting in less than two months, and so we have a very short timeframe. We, we realize that this legislation is, you know, does have some technical errors right at this moment, but in order to call the legislature and have something before you, we had to submit this in a, you know, as quickly as we could. That being said, we still have, we still also have the contract that, that has to be reviewed by the AG's office. If it hasn't been delivered to them by now, it should be there at their office immediately, or, you know, very, very shortly. And I guess like, you know, I, I would open it up if you have any questions from me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Haddock, and that was Ray Haddock, the legal advisor, I guess, to the governor, legal counsel. Why don't we go ahead and kind of just set some ground rules? The, the Bill 1-4S, we'll have some general discussion and comments on the bill. We'll allow each of the senators to make some comments. We'll limit those comments to, to five, five minutes each for general comments. Then we will come back and go through the bill on a section by section basis in which, at that time, the bill will be open for amendments, and that, and then we would proceed on the discussion of all of those amendments, and we will proceed with our regular rules in terms of speaking on amendments and, and so forth. So the rules of the House would apply with the exception that we'll, we'll go ahead and grant initial round of five minutes per senator to discuss the general bill and then go on the specifics of each of the sections. So may I just have a hands on the, to see the discussion? I see one, Senator Cruz. Senator Guthertz. Senator Tenorio. Any other senators? Senator Palacios? Senator Rispichio? Is that it? Okay, well, we'll go ahead and Senator Wampat, or Speaker Wampat? Okay. One of the things we'd like to, while we're making some general comments, Mr. Haddock mentioned that there are technical problems with the bill, and we would like to request from him that before we go into the section by section, that you prepare those lists, if you have a copy of what those technical amendments would be, or what those technical deficiencies are. And, you know, we could, before we go into the section by section. So that would be assist the legislature in the deliberation of that. Okay? So Senator Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First, I'd like to say that I, I support the intent of the legislation, and I do understand that there are problems with the bill. I, I don't think that we have the authority to amend federal statute as it relates to tax, so I'm not sure that we have the authority to do some of the income tax credits that are being requested in here. But the general intent I support because I did not go to the graduations this year of the schools because I, I could not go to the GW and the JFK graduations because I was too embarrassed about the fact that we did not, in a timely fashion, provide them with separate campuses. And I, I'm hoping that next year I can go to the graduations knowing that we have provided both schools with separate campuses so they could have their full schedule. I'm a little unable to speak right now. I was completely thrown off guard when two teachers told me they would much rather have double session than, than pay for a temporary campus, and I cannot believe that anybody who purports to be an educator would, would say that, that there is a price on education for our students. For me, it's like that MasterCard commercial. Education is priceless, and as, as long as it doesn't become outrageous, I think we as a legislature owe it to our students to find some way to provide the, the funds to be able to provide a, a campus for the JFK students temporarily. And I assured the JFK task force over the weekend when I met with them that the passage of this bill did not mean that their, the, that the permanent JFK was not going to be built. I assured them that we as a legislature would continue to push forward with that. So I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, I, I support the intent, and I look forward to the section by section analysis so that we can amend this and get it through, passed at the earliest possible time.
Thank you very much, Senator Cruz. Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, colleagues and ladies and gentlemen at the panel. I'm very happy we're here today to finally have a chance to look at this bill and the proposed contract for a new temporary location for JFK. I'd like to premise my remarks by saying that as a Mainilau person, I'm very concerned about what happened at GW this year. I have a family member at GW, was a freshman at GW this year, and I was very concerned for him and his classmates and all the students, both the JFK and the GW students that went up there in Mainilau this past year. We know things were not great. Our teachers and our staffers there did a herculean job to do their best, but this has had a great toll on the entire community in Mainilau, and it has not been the best educational environment for these students. Having said that, I also want to say that I'm looking for reasonableness. If there's something in this proposed legislation that is not reasonable and fair to the people of Guam, then I will take exception to it. So I hope that all involved here understand the role of this legislature. We are here to ensure the protection of the best interests of the people of Guam on this matter, and we must be sure that whatever we agree to with this contract is reasonable for the people of Guam and the children of Guam. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Guthertz. Senator Tenorio, you next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I also want to thank the panel members for making time this afternoon to be here to explain the many details, and there are quite a, some of them that need to be fleshed out in this process. As one of the members of this body for now going on eight years, it's very interesting to see this novel approach we've done in using ComPAC impact funds to do lease arrangements, but this is a different approach, and we're using a system now of tax rebates and, as one of the previous speakers had talked about trying to rewrite the tax codes, clearly it's not within our authority, but those things that are within our authority that offsets the actual amount that we have to pay, which seems a reasonable amount. And that brings up the second core function or issue that I have about the reasonableness of how much money we're paying for the facilities. I, I think, so I did some quick math, and it comes out to about forty, fifty-four million dollars if the full ten years is used at the five point one and then a five point four something million per year. My concern is being proactive and making sure that at the end of this ten-year period, that we have actually invested in something that is going to be in the best interest of all the people of Guam, and that if there's any way to find a, a solution for JFK and the other schools that it envisions trying to bring up to standard, that we are able to do that at a cost which is reasonable and with a plan, because we're talking about a ten-year window. With the John F. Kennedy, as I understand, it's going to take a couple of years to finish. What happens then? So I'm going to be looking for what happens after JFK. I'm going to be looking about what these facilities are going to be used for, for the long term, because this is a ten-year period. I want to make sure that we're actually taking care of the John F. Kennedy Schools, students, and their staff, and the faculty, and it's in tandem with cooperation with the Guam Public School System and our governor's office. So that's what I envision seeing, and I hope that at the end of this discussion, and I'll be surprised if it's finished this afternoon, that we're going to ultimately find some solution for JFK that is truly benefit all of our island, and it helps all of our people. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Tenorio. Senator Palacios?
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. You know, it's very encouraging that the major players are coming together here this afternoon, the legislature, the executive, the superintendent, and of course, the office of the Attorney General, to deal with this issue with respect to the double session at GW and the adverse effect that, that is beginning to have on the students there. I am in general support, of course, with the idea to find a solution, a temporary, I guess, campus for JFK, and I think that we, it's fortunate that there is at least a vendor strong enough or big enough to be able to provide such a service. Now, of course, I guess with this session, we hope to not have double session in the next school year. Under the circumstances, Mr. Speaker, we are hard pressed, of course, to find a solution to alleviate the problems now resulting from the double session. The learning environment, I mean, everybody can see it, is now, now the double session is less than good. And I know because I, at one time, I was up there to, to give a class, I guess, presentation for some of the classes, and the, one group has to wait until the morning class is gone, and then the second group come in, and there's just so much lost time in between. This valuable time that can best be utilized in the classroom. My understanding, Mr. Speaker, with respect to the tax rebate is that essentially, in a very simplistic fashion, is that what the company would have owed the governor of Guam essentially saying, well, don't pay over to the governor of Guam, just apply it to what the governor is supposed to pay anyway. And that's, that's my simple, I guess, analysis of what a tax rebate is, is that instead of the vendor paying into the tax, and then in turn we take the tax and pay the lease, well, we just skip in and offset it, and then charges the balance and so forth. And I am, of course, prepared to listen to presentations here with the experts, and perhaps maybe we can find a solution, but let us all hope that at the end of this session, we can assure the students that there will be no double session next school year. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Palacios. Senator Rispichio?
Thank you very much, Ms. Chairman, and good afternoon to everyone up there. You know, this is clearly an extraordinary solution to an extraordinary problem that we've experienced, or the, both the John F. Kennedy High School and the George Washington High School community have experienced over the past year. And I know in looking at this process, Mr. Chairman, it just seems a little bit perplexing, although this discussion should allay some of our concerns in that we've identified a solution to a problem, and I think Attorney Haddock framed the debate clearly that given the fact that the governor of Guam does not have the cash outright to pay this, this is why these tax credits are being offered. But I want to say that it's these kinds of arrangements that lend itself to the structural imbalance of the governor of Guam. And so I'm glad that BBMR is here, Mr. Chairman. I'm, I'm glad that we can generate some discussion that perhaps the governor should be obligated, or rather, commit himself to identifying from where he plans to offset these tax credits. If we're going to give tax credits by way of this proposal, then I'm hoping that maybe we would entertain an amendment at some point to require that the governor identify from which, whether it's a general fund or other kind of sources of coming into the governor of Guam where these tax credits can be offset. So I'm very happy that you've allowed Ms. Bertha Duenez to be part of this discussion. Ms. Chairman, I'm also happy that we're at this juncture where we can articulate that because we don't have the cash required to build a new school, I think the best way I could frame this is like the, the decision to rent an apartment versus buying or building a home. If individuals have the money, they would buy a house, they would build a house, but for, for those of us who are not able to do that, we go on a month-to-month rent, and that's the kind of situation we're in. If we had the cash, then clearly JFK, there would be no question as to rebuilding JFK at the John F. Kennedy High School site, and that would be the end of this discussion because that would be the solution. But in this case, we don't have the forty to sixty million dollar capital outlay requirement, at least at this point, to get, to end the double session at John F. Kennedy High School, at George Washington High School, so that JFK can have their own campus, interim campus. And I think this opportunity here to be in the committee as a whole will clear up a lot of these misconceptions where people would just outright say, well, just build a school, why are you going to go to Tgen? And I'm hoping that that would be the discussion for today, and I've, I've hoped to have been able to clearly articulate my goal for this afternoon's special session. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispichio. Senator Wampat, Speaker Wampat, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I think that it was obvious that when we met in this last session, when we had GPSS here to address the interim campus and their current situation, that we knew that we needed to move forward, that we needed to, we need to do something different. And, and I'm kind of, I guess, torn in the sense that, because I know that you've taken a very different approach in terms of looking at the revenues coming into, to the island and how we want to be able to appropriate them all to the different departments and agencies, and here now we're going to possibly, I know, deplete the resources that be available in terms of a tax rebate and, and tax credits. But I think that when we consider, you know, all of the, the things that have happened and may continue to happen when we, when we address the JFK and GW situation, is that I don't think there's anyone who would like to see the children go through another year again of a double session. I realize that, that I, I know the president of the university at one time said that when he was at the first graduate of JFK, that they were actually in a double session for, for two years, but that was their school only on a double session versus two schools going on, on a double session. And so when we think about that, we have to always consider some of the losses that the children had gone through, that sometimes we may not even, in some cases, we might be able to quantify them, and others we may not. But there's definitely some instructional time that was lost. There's a lot of absences and discipline problems as a result of that, a loss of any of school activities that the children could have after class, that, that was curtailed. But I think some other things that was very important that we may not even be able to quantify, and that there was this, an increase of tension that actually existed between the two campuses, both as faculty, staff, and students, and, and those are sometimes very difficult to try to repair, may even take years, and we, we don't, we live in such a small community that we don't want to see that type of rivalry. I, we don't mind that if it's an inter-scholastic type of sports, an academic, you know, competition, but surely not because one was on top of the other in a situation where, where we have this double session. The, the idea, when I first introduced Bill One, I know was to, because of the fact that time and time, I was being said that we don't have the cash available to be able to pay that, to pay for even a new school. that, to pay for even a new school, the renovation of a school, and much less now for an interim campus. And we all know that we've actually gone through that, of course, several months, just dealing with having to go out and borrow now for the landfill, COLA, and for the income tax. But even for those issues, there were those who said that it couldn't happen, and it actually did happen, you know, to our, not just our surprise, but to actually be happy with the results. And although some may say that this may not be a real good thing, but there would definitely be other benefits as a result of it. The one other thing, too, that I think, you know, ever since I've had this discussion with you, Mr. Chairman, and I know I never thought about it, of different types of options besides the tax credits, tax rebates, possibly outright cash, if, you know, the projection and the predictions of exactly what's going to happen in the years, you know, forward, and even before the end of the expiration or maturity of this lease, that there would be opportunities or the availability of cash to be able to make the payment. The push, of course, for compact impact, because my colleague here to the right has been, you know, an advocate of that, and actually, you know, reaching out to Congress as well to make the payment. And then there's also the other option of the set of sites and that could be used once we address the COLA and the income tax, that maybe that too in itself might be available to be used, so that, and that's something maybe to consider, and I don't know if that's part of the contract where it can even be amended to that point, because there may be other options other than just what is actually stated in the bill. So I think that with the combination of the minds of the legislature here, and of course, with the experts to your left and right to guide us, that I honestly believe that we should be able to come up with a bill that, and with the different conditions, you know, to make this possible, because we surely do not have the luxury of another building, another large facility on the island. And even if we have the money to do it, to do this, we don't have a place for the children. So, and to do it in the summer is not sufficient, because we're talking about an entire campus. And then the other benefit could be that, which I thought of at first, thinking that once JFK should leave this campus, there's also the possibility then of other schools, especially the really old schools that has been, you know, worn down, that this can be a staging school as well for those schools as we continue to do repairs. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Speaker Wampat. Any other member of the body wishing to comment? If not, can I ask either the Speaker or Senator Marson?
Speaker Onyew, if I can ask.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I, you know, there's no doubt, I think, in terms of what the body desires, what Guam Public School System desires, what the governor's office desires, and that is to get our children into a permanent facility returning to JFK campus. The bill itself does not address that problem. There's nothing in this bill that says anything about a commitment to getting the children back at JFK in a new facility, in a refurbished facility, or in any facility at all. So that is my first problem here. The other problem, of course, we have is that the bill is open-ended. There's nothing to limit it to the JFK facility or to one facility. It appears that this is a program we're going to put, and that we can kind of run around the entire island finding facilities we want to give tax credits to. So is that the intent here? I think if we're going to focus on what we want the problem to solve, or what problem we want to solve, we got to tie it to the problem. And there is nothing at all that ties this to getting the children back at JFK. So that's a concern I have with the way the bill is written. Obviously, the bill is general, but what has occurred is, of course, we've had some more specific actions that have been taken. They're no longer just, we intend to do it this way. So there, we now have specifics to what the governor desires, because he signed off on it, that will implement this program. And once again, it ties it to a specific use of a facility that is not linked to anything at all that says, once you get in there, you must do something about JFK. There's nothing at all. So once again, the ultimate goal is being left for future consideration, while we're going to try and solve something today with regards to the double session at GW, which everyone wants to do through this process, but there's nothing to tie it to the ultimate goal of putting in the children back at JFK in a non-double session mode, in a new facility or a refurbished facility. There's no commitment at all to doing that with the identification of any funds to do so. There's no commitment with regards to the execution of any contract that'll say that will happen. As a matter of fact, the only commitment that we know is that we're going to commit ourselves to this program for the next 10 years, because the governor has, by virtue of signing off on the contract under this program that hasn't been implemented, he doesn't care what happens with the bill. He's already telling us what he's agreeing to in the execution of the contract, that these are the terms and conditions that he's agreed to even without the bill being passed. And that is, he wants a five-year lease minimum, wants a 10-year lease maximum, wants all these things, regardless of what happens, this is what he wants. And so to me, it's kind of looking like, we want to solve the double session at GW, but it doesn't matter that we could do that in one year and leave. What matters is that we're going to guarantee a five-year lease. So we're going to guarantee a five-year, basically, we're going to guarantee $25 million over the next year of general fund revenues for a temporary facility that we need for one year, maybe, if we hurry and execute a contract. So it's looking like a permanent solution to a temporary problem. And I think that that's, you know, that's what's, you know, the other condition that that refers to when you hear that is suicide. When you ask somebody, what is suicide, it's a permanent solution to a temporary problem. So are we, in fact, committing suicide with this bill in terms of finding a permanent solution to a temporary problem? Maybe just for five years, but that's $25 million. And what other alternatives could be done in this process that may identify a better management of the financial resource of this government that will allow us to do so? And I know we're all pressed and compressed for time, and so maybe the governor did the best he could. Or maybe he didn't even care, because he just said, here's what Cortec wants, and you guys deal with it. Because that's really what the letter says. The letter that transmittal says, this is not what I negotiated on behalf of the people of Guam, this is what Cortec wanted. They drafted it, you guys deal with it. Well, I want to know, how does the governor feel about this? Does he think it's a good deal? Can we do better? Are there alternatives for collateral equipment, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? Are there those kind of issues that can allow us to maximize the scarce resources that we have for the benefit of the Guam Public School System? Because this is money that could go to the Guam Public School System, that will not go to the Guam Public School System, or outside of the Guam Public School System in a lease to a facility. So those are my general comments and general questions I have on the bill. And as we go through the section by section, and how they translate into the terms and conditions of the lease, I think we can't help but ask those questions, because those questions are now known actions. And they're no lo, we don't longer have to guess what are they going to, what's it going to look like? We know what it's going to look like, because they've been agreed to by the governor in this, in this manner. So those are my general concerns and comments, and the way the bill's presented, and what is turning out to and translating into with regards to agreements by the, by the parties involved in executing this and implementing this policy, should it be passed by the legislature. So thank you very much.
Sitos Masi, Speaker Ben. Senator Frank Blascher, recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And first off, I want to apologize to the preceding chair for not being, raising my hand earlier for the general comments. You know, Madam Chair, you know, I recognize what the concern and the needs are as to why, and why we've been called into special session, so that we can address this issue and this concern about a tax credit. I guess my, my issue is, and I'm going to listen intently to, you know, the discussions that we'll have, I'm sure, with revenue and taxation and with BBMR, is what is our financial state right now? And how does this state, how is this state going to be impacted by, you know, just last week, the World Health Organization declared the pandemic, and as a result of the pandemic of, you know, H1N1? What are we going to anticipate? We recognize that traditionally and historically, you know, the areas that we rely on to be able to provide our tourism dollars normally sit back and wait when some things, things like this occur, you know? What is the trend now? What are we starting to see now, and what can we anticipate? Because this will go back to what our ability will be to be able to provide the credits that is, that's being sought here. Along those lines, and I appreciate, and I'm going to wait, because if I remember correctly, you know, Mr. Haddock there said that there's going to be some, some changes and some corrections that are going to be needed with the bill. And I'd like to be able to see those things. But furthermore, in looking at what this agreement is that we have with the government of Guam, between the government of Guam and Cortec, and as far as the contract, there are other issues and the concerns that I have here, or that are spelled out in the contract, that have also a June 17 deadline that are not necessarily being addressed by this bill, and how are we going to address that? More specifically, in the area of the government claims protection, okay? Section 19D of the contract. And how are we going to be able to address that? Because there may be an issue with regards to the germane-ness of being able to address that issue in this bill if we needed to address that as well. So I mean, I'm going to be listening to how we're going to be able to do that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Blas.
Are there any other members of the body which may want to make some general comments? If not, then we'll go ahead and proceed with a section by section. The rule would be to either amend or delete a section. So that would, that would be the action allowable under the rules of the committee and this committee as a whole.
Point of inquiry, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Are we going to be able to do that? And I remember that Mr. Haddock said that he had some changes that he wanted. Are we going to give him some time to do that first before?
Yeah, I'm going to ask him if he, if he's ready to outline what the technical deficiencies were in the bill as submitted by the governor, so.
So can we do that first, so that we will? Thank you.
I was going to ask him to give us a list of what those technical deficiencies were that were knowingly submitted down here, that would have to be corrected, I guess. So, Mr. Haddock?
I apologize for submitting it down with technical difficult, or with technical problems with the bill. However, as I did say before, we're running out of time, and this thing had to be transmitted very quickly. I, I was under the pressure of whether or not to transmit it or not, and it was my decision to go ahead and transmit a bill that I did know probably had problems, and knowing that we would be able to address that at a later time. I did trust on, you know, the ability of the legislature to debate this issue and come up with a bill that would be at the best interest of the children. That being said, the first thing that I think that needs to be addressed in the, in the bill is there needs to be a new definition regarding tax rebate, tax exemption, tax offsets, tax credits, and tax abatements. And those five definitions need to be defined as a tax rebate or a tax abatement as allowed by the Organic Act of Guam. And in that, the reason why that's being said is because as it goes with income taxes, I believe only a tax abatement will be available for income taxes. We can't give a pre-credit for income taxes, but they'll have to pay the taxes upfront, and then they'll get a bait, they'll get an abatement or a credit later on, they'll be credited back for their income tax purposes. The other, the other section that I believe that needed to be modified was, was Section E of, or subsection E of Section 3. And that particular provision automatically gives the lessor a QC regarding this project. And that provision, although we do agree that they, they will be entitled to, or they could, they, they will be entitled to apply for QC under this, under the, our QC program, this provision automatically approves them for that, and that should be taken out of that section.
Section E.
Yes. And those would be the, the two main deficiencies that I found that, that I would suggest. However, I, I do leave it up to the legislature to find what's, they believe is in the best interest of the children and the people of Guam.
Okay. Thank you very much. Perhaps any member of the body wishing to sponsor those amendments?
The easier of the two was regarding Section 3, Subsection E, to completely eliminate Or if, if the legislature so chooses, they, they could, they could make it subject to approval by GEDCA if they did want to leave it, and let them go through the application process. But what that is negating is the normal process of applying for the QC program for this particular project. The first thing was, and the first thing that I did mention was to enter a definition, and that definition would fall in Section 2, and there would be a new subsection, Section D, and that would read tax re-
I tell you, I tell you what. I'm, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess. I'm going to ask the governor's legal counsel to work with the legislative legal counsel to draft those amendments, and those amendments will be introduced by the committee at the request of, by the committee, all right, on those technical amendments. So five-minute recess.
The committee is back from its recess. Some language has been worked out for proposal when we get to the appropriate section. Before we proceed on the entertainment of amendments, I would like to give the Attorney General who has had received a copy of the bill when we opened the hearing, would like to have them give their general perspective on the bill as current, in its current form without any amendments, and then I'm going to ask the Department of Revenue and Taxation to also just give us their comments on the bill, on the sections that pertain to their jurisdiction, which is the income tax, and then depending on those comments, we may need to take another recess and work out any kind of discrepancies that, and technicalities that may occur as a result of their perspective. So, I'm going to ask the Attorney General to go ahead and give us their initial reading on the bill. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good afternoon, Senator. Mr. Speaker, Phil Tidinko, Chief Deputy Attorney General, on behalf of the Office of the Attorney General, and also with me today is Deputy Attorney, Assistant Attorney General Pat Mason. Thank you for inviting us. Yes, we've just had an opportunity to look at this latest bill, number one, for as, as I believe it's related to or referenced to a provision in the lease agreement between Cortech and the government of Guam, i.e. the governor of Guam. Oh, okay. Is this, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. And our initial observation of this bill, of course, what stood out, and I believe that was alluded to by the good Senator B.J. Cruz, is the reference to the language as it relates to income tax. As many of you may or may not know, there is case law that indicates that the Guam legislature is very restricted in the areas where it can pass legislation as affects our income tax laws, and this was addressed in Ramsey v. Chaco in Ninth Circuit case, as well as the Sayer case, that it's generally the purview of the U.S. Congress to provide any amendments, especially as it relates to tax credits in reference to income tax, although there, there is the limited exception as it related to the GETCA program, but again, that was discussed fully in those opinions why that limited exception was permitted there. So, one of the first observations we noted in this current bill that is problematic is the permitting of offsets or, or tax credits as it relates to income tax. Certainly other privileged business taxes and so forth appear to be within the purview of the Guam Legislature, but the income tax may violate the mere tax rule that we're required to comply with, and I think if necessary, Pat Mason can address those more fully since he's a lot more familiar with, with that. Again, we just, we're doing this on the fly, just, we got the call this morning, and we're trying to look at this bill as it relates to the lease agreement provision that's trying to offer as a benefit tax credit as it relates to income tax, and it's my understanding that the Authors Council, the Governor's Office wanted to delete already one section as it relates to income tax, and so I think that's, that's very helpful, and I know the latest amendments also are trying to address that. Again, the issue is reference to income tax will probably be problematic.
Mr. Mason, is that, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, really, I think Phil pretty much covered it.
Senator. Thank you very much. Mr. Pablo. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good afternoon, Mr. Speaker, Senators. My name is Paul Pablo. I'm the Acting Deputy Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation.
Acting Deputy or Acting Director?
Well, it changes every now and then.
Okay.
Art is off-ile, so I'll be acting in this capacity.
All right.
For the most part of this legislation, you know, RevTax sees no strong opposition with respect to allowance for a tax credit, you know, to afford the children of JFK a temporary stay and a temporary fix, seeing as the identification of money seem to be very limited, you know, for this specific situation. But just as Mr. Tidinko had mentioned regarding some of the concerns with federal income taxes and local income taxes, we want to make it quite clear that it often becomes very challenging when the Guam Legislature tries to enact legislation that affects federal income taxes. I believe there's only one program that allows for the rebate of federal income taxes, and then again, that's what also Mr. Haddock had mentioned earlier, that the language probably needs to be afforded that change so that it can be mirrored under the GETCA QC program. Other than that, like I said, the only other concern that the Department would have in an administrative capacity is that this bill authorizes the continued resale of these. I know that many of us in the past have seen how the promissory notes with GPSS, how those were introduced before, and those were often told about reselling and passing it up to several individuals. It became just an accounting nightmare to track down whether these were sold at a discount, whether there was any income recognition, or even the correct application of the credits. So barring, you know, that resale may not, may, may kind of be limited to a certain extent, and maybe specifically for this reason, maybe even reconsidering not, you know, identifying if there is going to be one reseller and minimizing it to that. Other than that, the Department is in support of this.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Pablo. There seems that the amendment that was proposed by, that is up for a draft, appears to still require some additional consultation between the Attorney General and the, and the Governor's Office to ensure that all the questions with regards to the applicability and, and what its effect would be on the, on the rebate program, the applicability of the rebate as it fits with regards to the qualifying certificate program and, and what is allowed under that program. So, I would, as Chair then, I think to, in order to facilitate, you know, discussion that's going to be productive, I think we need to resolve these matters, and if possible, resolve them because they're all very technical from a technical perspective, and so I'm going to request if it would be acceptable to the body that we, we recess, allow the language to be worked out, and then return when we have some language that's been approved by RevTax, by the AG, and, and by the Governor's Office, is, unless there's any objections from the body? Yes, Senator? I would probably think that it would be a return tomorrow morning. Okay? Oh, oh, tomorrow, tomorrow morning, we still have, unfortunately, the public hearing school bills, so, but we could reschedule that. Mr. Haddock is requesting maybe tomorrow afternoon?
Mr. President, if you have time.
Is that going to be acceptable? Tomorrow afternoon at 1:00, again, 1:00 P.M.
Point of information, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, Senator.
A quick, just so we're clear, the contract will be nullified if nothing happens until June 17th, right?
On the, we have until the 17th to enact legislation.
Is that the close of business on the 17th, or 11:59 P.M. on the 16th?
It gives us until the 17th, so I would assume, yeah, the midnight.
Is that the close of business on the 17th, or, or 11:59 P.M. on the 16th?
It gives us until the 17th, so I would assume, yeah, the midnight.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so can I get a motion to recess until 1:00 P.M. tomorrow? All right, on that motion, any objections? No objections? This committee in the whole is in recess until 1:00 P.M. tomorrow, and then we'll return and pick up the discussion on the amendments. Thank you, and sit down, Mr. Mason.